The October 28th meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board is hereby called to order. At this time, I'd ask Mr. Harris to give our indication.
Let us pray. Most gracious having the Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can assemble ourselves for our October 28th Planning Board meeting. And Lord, just be with the families tonight that has lost loved ones, be with Senator Kay Hagman's family, Elijah Cummings and the Michigan Governor, all lost during the month of October. Lord, just be with us tonight as we review these cases, help us to make decisions to be beneficial to the citizens of Rockingham County and the requesting parties. Rest these things in your precious name. Amen.
At this time, I'll ask Ms. Cunningham to recite the procedural requirements for the meeting.
The guidelines for the speakers are as follows. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker must be sworn in by the presiding board member prior to the case hearings. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. The case hearing guidelines are as follows. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak either against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After the public comment period is completed, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures.
Before we present our first case, anybody who has signed up to speak tonight, please step forward to be sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Please be seated. At this time, I'll ask staff to present our first case, 2019-021.
You have to hear tonight a rezoning case, 2019-21, a request for rezoning from residential agricultural to residential protected conditional district. The parcel is donated by tax pin 7913-0050-8532. You've heard this case before. You heard a different request for the same property for a rezoning that was not a conditional rezoning. The property is located at 1367 Gideon Grove Church Road, 118 acre property. The applicant wishes to rezone to residential protected in order to request afterward a subdivision. He's conditioned the zoning with a maximum number of lots for 10 of 10.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
I just realized I'm not even...
I don't think staff's through with their presentation, are you?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that this wasn't up at all. Case is... The property is located in southwest part of the county in the rural transition land Description of the rural transition land class is to accommodate existing residential neighborhoods and balance the need to retain the area's rural character and beauty with a strong demand for continued residential development. I won't read the entire land class description. It's basically about residential development grouped together, neighborhood commercial centers adjacent to collector streets, which doesn't apply in this case because this is just a residential zoning. Location of the property. This is the aerial photograph of the property, which again, you have seen before.
Did you have any calls regarding this?
We had... I think we had one call about this. The input that we did have, however, was from a previous zoning case. We did not have calls from this case. If there aren't any more questions, I'll leave you to...
It doesn't appear so there are.
...open the hearing.
Is James Smith here, the applicant? Bill Preddy?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come forward, please? For the record, could you please state your name and address?
Bill Preddy, 8311 Patricia Drive in Stokesdale, North Carolina.
Okay. What is it you want the board to know?
Well, I'm here with my wife, Diane Preddy, and my sister-in-law, Bonnie Faye Mills. They own this parcel of land. And my wife has had some real bad health problems, and she can't speak, or I'm sure she would. So I'm sort of speaking for her, and if my sister-in-law'd like to speak, she's signed up. We've owned that property for a good while since Ms. Preston, their mother, owned that property and was born on it. And we're just... All of us in bad health. And my sister-in-law is part owner in that property. She just lost a son back in March, 48 years old, and her daughter, one of her daughters, is struggling with pancreatic cancer. So we're just in a condition that we don't want to own the property anymore, and Mr. Smith wants to buy it. And he has said that he would not build over 10 houses, up to 10 houses, on Gideon Grove. And I certainly... Well, one, I appreciate you letting me say something. And it's just like I asked everybody on the elevator going up on top of the World Trade Center, I said, "Is anybody nervous besides me?" And they all were, and I'm a little nervous up here talking to y'all. It's new for me. I've never been in this building. But I did want to speak for my wife and her sister, and we would certainly appreciate you letting Mr. Smith purchase that property and build these homes. And I grew up in Rockingham County. I grew up in Roseville, right close to the Baptist Temple. And I'm very familiar with the poverty that has approached the county over the years, with American Bank Company pulling out, and Miller's shutting down, and the Canary and Roseville shutting down too. And a lot of jobs is gone from here. And a lot of homes in Roseville and Rockingham County have been foreclosed on or they've been abandoned. And to see somebody build something and a nice home, and somebody able to purchase it and have the money to purchase it with, they're going to spend money in the county, and they'll pay taxes in the county. And as a result of that, it will help Rockingham County get back on their... You get approached getting on their feet and being prosperous. So I would appreciate it if you would let Mr. Smith purchase it and build those homes. And thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Hold on one second.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Preddy?
Is the land being utilized at this time for anything... For any purpose at all?
No, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Mr. Preddy, do you know very much history about this piece of land? I'm sure, you know, your wife, if her family and her sister were born there. Do you know what it was used for in the beginning, or has it just been left in a natural state?
Is it in a natural state?
Or has it always been in a natural state?
It always has. We sold a timber off part of it at one time. That's been years ago. It's actually ready. You could timber it now if you really wanted to. There was a... They have planted tobacco on it. James Lee Holbert lives in Rockingham County. He farmed that land for quite a while. And then Henderson-Satterfield has planted product on that land before. And J.B. Colley has planted tobacco on it and wheat. But now, it's... Nobody's tending to it. And you know that kind of property along the road attracts four-wheel people and people that are looking to dump their garbage. And it's not just there. I'm a runner, and you run down the side of the road and you see it, what people throw out. And if nobody's watching the property, they'll use it for anything. So I think to let somebody live on it, it'd be a blessing. It really would be. Did I answer your question? I'm not sure.
You did. Thank you.
I wanted to. I thought I was dead, but...
You did.
Okay. Thank you for asking me a question. That was a good question. Both of them were good questions, so...
Any other questions for Mr. Preddy? Thank you, sir.
I thank you.
Bonnie Miller? Please come forward. You signed up to speak.
I want to screen and...
We can take care of that right now. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you should present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. For the record, please state your name and address.
Bonnie P. Mills. I live at 8312 Patricia Drive in Stokesdale.
And what is it you would like the board to know?
I would like to say that we held on to the farm because it was our grandfather's farm. And my daddy and my mother inherited it. And it got to be an albatross around our neck. It didn't make enough money to pay the taxes on it. So it just got worse and worse. And we're getting older and older, and more stuff on our shoulders, and we're tired. That's about it.
Any questions for Ms. Mills? Lisa?
I do want...
Okay. Ms. Gentry? For the record, please state your name and address.
John Gentry, Jr. I'm at 1117 Gideon Grove Church Road. My farm joins up to the Preston Farm on the north side. One of the main things that I'm concerned about is, of course, the water levels that we're going to have, as many houses we're building. I understand where they're coming from about wanting to sell the land. I also understand that they just have... There are already seven lots or seven houses on the other side of the road that they sold that they didn't mention on that part of it. But... So there has been... Part of the farm has been sold. This was in a short while ago, just long enough for them to put the houses up on. Like back again, the water levels, we're drilling wells on all of these houses. Now, might be a little bit different if they were pulling the water off 220 and using our county water, but they're not doing that. They're just drilling wells. And of course, that's going to affect everybody's water level. Ours, I'm not on county water either, but it wasn't available at the time when I built my house. I think that's something that needs to be thought about, where they're going to get their water from. The runoff, they clean off all of these lots, and we got lots more runoff into the creeks and branches around the farms. Light pollution. I mean, most people probably don't bother them too much, but I have lived out there all my life. I'm 62 years old. And I like it being sort of dark out in the country. That's the reason I like living out there. Then people move out there, they build these houses on these... A house on an acre lot, first thing they do is cut down all the trees and put up nightlights. It's just a little aggravating. The building that we're having going on right now, a lot of contractor trucks, rough on the road, concrete trucks, brick trucks, lumber trucks. This highway is not designed for all of that. I was sitting on the front porch the other night, and I wish I'd have took a picture of it, I'd have showed you, but J.B. Colley, one of the guys that had rented their farm at one time, came... His son was driving the tractor down the road. There was eight vehicles behind this tractor, and if they had all stopped, you couldn't walk between them. I mean, they were all trying to get around him, all at one time. And we live... And this is a curvy little road. Dumping, they talked about dumping. They're right. But because I want to be honest with you, I went down for Free County Landfield Weekend, one weekend, cleaned up all over my farm, worked all day long on my farm cleaning up stuff where people had dumped televisions, trash, tires, everything. And took it down to the landfill, paid to dump it, because of course, they didn't take tires. But I paid to dump it, put all that in the landfill. Coming back home, I thought, "I'll stop and see how good it looks." I rode down the road, right below me, just to look at the land and see how it done. Somebody had already dumped a dump truck load of trees right out in the middle of my field. I did find out where it come from. I didn't prosecute anybody or anything like that, because probably we couldn't have proved it anyway, but it was some of the houses that they cut some of the trees off of. Four-wheelers, dirt bikes, you know, they just... They buy an acre of land, they buy an acre of land, and they think they own 200. They buy these four-wheel dirt bikes, they're all over my farm, all over the rest of the farms that are out there. That's a problem. And it's just... I like living in the country life. You know, it's a little bit laid back. We don't have quite as much traffic. And I know when we start building these more houses, we're going to have a whole lot more traffic. I mean, you figure two cars per house at least, and that's probably low. It's just the roads won't handle it, the schools won't handle it, the fire department can't handle it, the police department can't handle it. It's just... It's just a lot. It's a lot. I understand where they're coming from, too. Don't get me wrong. I do understand it. But it's just... It needs to be some regulations of number of houses that can be put on stuff like this. Another man says that he's wanting to put 10 houses on it. I would have to see his program before I would let that go, because I don't believe that he's going to take 100 acres of land, or how much that was right there, and only put 10 houses on it. Because this same gentleman bought the track across the road that belonged... That went with this farm. He's already put seven houses on that one, I believe, and another one going up right now. So... And that's not near 100 acres. I mean, it's like, I don't know how many acres it is. I can't say. But until I could see a program, something that he had shown me to what he was going to do, I just can't say that I would go along with it. But I appreciate y'all listening to me, and thank you very much.
Okay. Hold on, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gentry?
I do. Mr. Gentry, your land abuts this property.
Yes, ma'am.
On the picture there, that's... It's this with two small squares, I'm assuming?
The two small squares are my mother's house and my... I want to look at the other square, it's beyond our house. This is our farm, from here to here.
Okay. So I'm referring to... How many acres is your farm?
We have 100 acres.
You have 100 acres on your farm?
Yes.
Your dwelling is situated where on this farm? Is it on the picture or off the picture?
I'm on the picture. Honestly, I think this is the old picture, unless you want to... I may be this block right here. I really can't make it out real good.
Can you see that screen?
Right here, I think.
Okay.
Top one.
Yeah, the top. Okay. All right. And how long have you lived on this parcel of land?
62 years. I was born there. Well, I was born in the hospital, but yeah. That's where I came to when I was... When I came out of the hospital.
And is this a family farm?
It's a family farm. It's been in our family for hundreds of years. There are several farms in that area that was in my general family, but we've got... We pretty much got the last parcel of it. And it's all been farmed. We farmed... It's farmed every year. A lot of... All the farms around us are farmed. The Preston Farm was farmed. I mean, it wasn't farmed a lot, but it was farmed, and it is... It's good farmland. The farm right on the other side of them is farmed. It's Mr. Marshall's farm. He's not here right now, but...
Thank you.
Have I have a question for you? Have you spoken with anybody from DOT about your issues with the road?
No, I haven't.
And how about anybody with the Sheriff's Department or the county commissioners with the... Your dumping problems? I know the county's got an initiative with the...
I have talked to the Sheriff's Department about the dumping problem a few times. I mean, really, it's not a... It's a hard thing to police out there, because honestly, they just don't have the manpower to police all of that out there. They really don't.
If you'll allow me to play devil's advocate for just a moment, with the potentially 10 new houses going into that area, what would your thoughts be about having some extra set of eyes out of those family units that would maybe help scare off or run off some of these folks that are dumping and four-wheeling? So you have some extra eyes out of their way?
Well, out of the seven houses that are built right there beside me on the other lots, I don't know the first one of them.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, so that's really not an extra set of eyes for me. I mean, I've been up there and tried to introduce, but I really... There's no communication there.
Any other questions for Mr. Gentry?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry, you mentioned earlier about, I think it was a piece of equipment going up the road with six or eight cars or whatever behind it.
Just a farm tractor.
Okay. Now, that's rural.
Yes, it is.
Now, do we look at it as a rural community, or... I mean, what's the issue of rural community or the development coming in?
The development coming in.
Because the farming equipment was enhanced to traffic?
No. What I was saying was, the tractor was going down the road, there was eight cars behind it trying to get around it. Now, I wasn't saying that the tractor was causing the problem.
Okay. I got you.
The tractor wasn't causing... Yes, he was causing the problem, but he's got as much... He's been in that community for years and years, had been farming. And from what I was saying, I want... I would like for the community to stay like that, if it could.
Also, Mr. Gentry, I just would like you to know that what this board approves or denies in a way of zoning changes still has to be approved by the county commissioner at a subsequent meeting. And even after that, the builder has to submit plans to the county, and there's a committee called the Technical Review Committee, which is comprised of people from power, public safety, fire, all kinds of different entities that have to approve the building plans before any building can take place.
I understand that. I do. And I'm just here just to... I just wanted to throw my opinion out here on how I felt about it, and you know, as being as close to it as I am, I wanted everybody to know how I felt about it. But I do know it's got to go through several other zones before it can get... Before he can get an okay to build anything on it. But I mean, I'm just... To the point of the 10 houses, I just have a hard time believing it. You know, I haven't seen anything written down to show me that this is what he's going to do on 100 acres of property. I don't think that 10 houses are going to stop. I'm seeing it's going to be a development there.
Any other questions for Mr. Gentry? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is it Robert Griffin?
Hello. I'm Robert Griffin, 1139 Gideon Grove Church Road. I live closer to the property than Tommy. I married Tommy's sister, Velvet, so we're a family on the farm. My mother-in-law, she's there, been there all her life, 85 years old. And what one word everybody in this place is saying, farm, community. Farm, community. That's what it is. They want 70 houses to the right, they want 10, 15, 20 to the left. I'm looking at hog farming. If that's a way to do it, I'm looking at hog farming. I'll get it stinking so bad, they want... They can build all the houses they want, but I'm looking at hog farming. But I built a house five years ago. I come from Eden, North Carolina. My wife's mother's lived on that farm. I come from Eden, built her a house, just what she wanted, right smack dab in the center of 100 acres. Because we said one day, heck, it might be a trailer park right there in the field up next to the road beside her mom. So we went on back on up in the pasture, and just like Tommy says, that 100 acres they own, you hear the four-wheelers, boom, 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 hunting season, boom, boom, boom. Ain't nobody supposed to be over there. Nobody. But they over there. And you put 10 houses, 15 houses, then you're going to hear some four-wheelers. I mean, and farming, this is... I just can't... I just can't say... It took me... Let me go back to the water issue. I dug 500 feet to get right at a half a gallon or a gallon of water a minute, 500 feet. If all these houses come in and they start digging all these wells, 10, 15 wells, and then you got the people down on the other end, they approve that and get 70 houses down there, it's not going to be any water in that area. It's not going to be no water to farm. It's not going to be no water. And you know, it's just a shame that... I passed by Michael High School, looked up at the football field, seen the big hay bales of future farmers of America. I laughed. Where are they going to farm? When people just start selling their farmland to these home builders, and they're not working in Rock... Yeah, they're going to be paying taxes in Rockingham County. I know that, and that's great. But they going to Greensboro to work, they going to Winston to work. That's where all the money's at. If we had to... If we had to, if we had the, if we had the jobs here in Rockingham County, yes, that's great. But I, I, I appreciate y'all's time and, and consideration and, but I'm like Tommy. If you don't see it on paper on what this man's going to do, I just wish you, you would really consider not, not passing it. Thank you for your time.
Hold on, sir. Any questions for Mr. Griffin?
I do. Mr. Griffin, so you live on the same parcel of land that Mr. Gentry?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, and your house is where on that piece of property? So is that, is that the square in the middle?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's your house. So how many acres would you estimate is between your house and the edge of the proposed property to be sold?
Three. Three?
Thirty.
Thirty. I'm sorry.
So you're, you're basically in the middle of a hundred acre?
Yes, ma'am.
But, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Patrick Williams. Oh. No, he signed up for this case.
Which case is he speaking?
You're on the variance trial.
You're on the variance case?
Okay, he just, you just signed wrong chief paper. Okay. I'll keep it till the other case then. All right, that concludes the speakers that signed up to speak on this case. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to either approve or deny the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the zoning amendment before the planning board and that we adopt any statements that are required by NCGS 153A-341 and under additional matters. I'd like to note that the zoning request meets the intent of the land use plan and will fit well within the context of current uses in the local community.
Anyone like to second the motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same side. Motion is approved by both of the four to two. Oh, shouldn't we have a second case?
We did. The text amendment case, I believe, is not on the agenda.
Yeah, where's the copy for the text amendment case?
It's in your packet.
It's in the, it's in the packet. This picture is in the right order, it is. Immediately after the first case that we just heard, it's a single sheet.
Yeah, just one single sheet. Would you like to see mine?
Oh, I'm sure if it's in you, I can.
That's it.
Okay.
Well...
This is a text amendment that was requested by the Board of Commissioners to expand the notification requirements for notices of public hearing for zoning and special use permit cases. The current ordinance has us, has a requirement to notice only adjacent properties to that being rezoned. And this would have us noticing all properties within a thousand-foot buffer of the property being requested. I should clarify that while the, the notice requirement isn't a statutory requirement for the planning board, we still do plan to send the postcards ahead of the planning board meeting as well and to the same distance if, should this text amendment be passed.
The mailing, the mailing that we received states that the mailing distance will increase to a thousand feet. What was it before?
Adjacent. It was just to adjacent properties.
Abutter.
So you see at the, at the, at the lower half of your sheet there, the word adjoining is replaced with located within a thousand-foot buffer.
Is it going to be only those within the one-thousand-foot buffer or would be including those within the one-thousand feet? Because your, your adjoining neighbor may be two-thousand feet away or three-thousand feet away.
Sure, I understand the question. The thousand-foot buffer starts from the property line, the external property line of the property. So the pink area in pink here, it would be a thousand-foot buffer from all the properties that are, lie within that buffer along the property line.
Okay.
And if it's a, it was a two-hundred-acre par, parcel and a piece of it falls within that buffer, then the entire parcel is, of course, included in the notification list.
So the only change would be the highlighted area on the text?
That's correct, replacing the word adjoining with located within a thousand-foot buffer. It's also, I was asked to do some research of other counties and municipalities, and this lines up with other similar ordinances.
Do we have a motion to approve the text amendment as written?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. The text amendment is approved by the planning board.
Do you mind if I approach?
No, no, absolutely.
We need to approve the minutes. Ow, please, do we have to approve this? I just want to make sure. We just didn't claim the part of the agenda. I don't believe we had a business piece. We've got to do it here before we can report this.
Okay, so we've got to move this to here.
No, just close it, close it. The planning board, I mean, just, like, just...
Okay.
We can, we can, we can order.
No, we postpone this till the next meeting. At this time, in order to hear the next case, which falls under the jurisdiction of the Board of Adjustments, we're going to have to adjourn the planning board meeting and then convene the Board of Adjustment meeting. So I need a motion to adjourn the planning board.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, excuse myself for the last case.
Okay.
Still have a call.
At this time, I'll call the, to order the Board of Adjustment. Carrie, I don't have the procedures for the Board of Adjustment. Are they the same as the planning board?
They, I'm try, I'm trying to, to, yeah. I'm going to hand them to you.
May I mention, Mr. Cardwell just, my understanding is that he is refused from a vote due to a potential conflict here. It probably would be, I'm sorry, my mic was not on, to, for one member of the board to make a motion allowing, allowing him to recuse himself. And if a second is made, then vote in order to dismiss, dismiss his obligation and duty to vote on this matter.
Okay, we can do that. We need a motion to excuse Matt Cardwell from the Board of Adjustment meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? The motion to recuse Matt Cardwell from the Board of Adjustment meeting is approved.
May I, may I approach?
Yes.
Review the rules of procedure for the planning board emptying the copy.
Are we reading the same procedures?
I have, I have the procedure. I can substitute the words "Board of Adjustment" in there.
I just want to be, I want to be sure that we're covered.
Please bear with us a moment.
Sure.
Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Board of Adjustments must sign in the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Each speaker must be sworn in by the presiding board member prior to the case hearing. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After the public comment period is completed, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. Please remember that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Speakers will present information as sworn testimony. Let's see, we have, okay, Patrick Williams, you've signed up to, oh, is he the applicant?
Shall I present?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, hold on, sir. First, we're going to hear from staff. Got a little ahead of myself. Carrie.
As a Board of Adjustment, you're hearing a variance case. This is, as you mentioned, a quasi-judicial proceeding, requires a four-fifths majority vote for granting a variance case has very specific criteria upon which it can be granted that are in your staff report and also on display here in the screen in a moment. The case is requested for 270 Woodsong Drive. It is a request to reduce a front setback from thirty-five feet to thirty feet instead of a requirement to be thirty-five feet from the right-of-way. The applicant is requesting to construct a building thirty feet, up to thirty feet from the right-of-way. The property is located in a neighborhood at the end of a cul-de-sac. This is a topographic map showing the existing home and the slopes on the property. This is a site plan where the applicant is requesting to extend a covered porch on the front of a building that he has already built in order to complete the design that he has and in order to locate the building where it is rather than where the land has steep slopes and a septic system, which is in your plans, your report. This is an aerial map showing the design of the neighborhood and the relative distances of other homes around the cul-de-sac and along the street. As I said, criteria for approval is showing, listening to evidence that persuades you to reach all of the four, of four conclusions, and a determination that the variance will not extend an area, change the district boundaries, impair adequate supply of light and air, material increase, public danger of fire, material diminish or impair established property in any other respect, impair the public health, safety, moral, morale, and general wearfear, So, might want to make sure that if anyone does present testimony that they have been sworn in. And it's a little bit different than a planning case in that you're hearing, you're sitting as a judicial board and hearing evidence toward making a determination based on this criteria.
Any questions for staff before we...
I have a couple of questions. So on the topo map, map that you've got there, explain a little bit, the, the wider the lines, the, the less slope and the tighter the lines, the tighter gradient on the lines show a steeper slope.
Steeper slope, that's correct. And each, each line is a four-foot contour in this gradient. Emily, am I, am I correct in that? Those are, those are four feet, not two feet? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the slopes are steeper toward the water coming up and evening out toward the road.
And you... And you show the septic to, if you're looking at the house, to the right-hand side of the house, correct?
As you're facing the house from the street, that's correct.
And how many feet from the edge of the septic to the house would you estimate?
That is a good question for the speakers who are, I notice, are here tonight. Free to ask. And any further questions actually ought to be in the form of testimony. So, if I'm going to do more, I ought to be sworn in.
Help me out here. Is there already a house there?
There is.
So, what are we looking at here, just an improvement to the house?
I would rather...
An addition to the house?
I would rather the applicant answer that question.
Okay. But there is a residence there now?
There is.
Thank you. I'm only, I'm showing that only Patrick Williams has signed up to speak on this case. Is that true? Okay, Patrick, if you could come forward, please. And you're gonna need to be sworn in.
I did a minute ago, but you need to do it again?
I would say that you should be...
Yeah, you should be. That was a different meeting. That was Planning Board, this is Board of Adjustments. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Board of Adjustments on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Patrick Williams. I live at 270 Woodsong Drive in Stokesdale. And we are homeschooling our children, so we decided to close in our garage on our home. To do that, we had to finish it. And so, and to get the permits to do it right, get to finish our garage, and to make our house not look funny from the road, we decided to put a porch on the front of it and just kind of have a full-front porch to make our house look better. So, it wouldn't look weird that we were closing in our garage. I went to the planning and zoning, whatever department to get the permits and sat down and actually told the people there, when I, before I do this, I want to make sure if I close in my garage, one day I can add a garage beside my house, which you can see this is very steep. If you're looking at my house to the left, it falls off hill. But I wanted to make sure with where my well was at beside my house, that I could add a garage at some point in time for resale value or whatever for my house. So, we did some maps and played on it and layered a garage on the maps there while I was in the office. We didn't really even talk about the porch because the porch was very small compared to a garage. I had some, they did some maps for me to say, hey, yeah, I think we can, you can fit the garage in here in front of your well. We never really even questioned the fact that it was an issue with the porch. Well, I did the permits, I paid for it, and I did the permits for a nine-by-18 covered porch with a deck underneath it, also with the garage. So, I got a permit for both. Lo and behold, once we got started, converted our garage, and have made a lot of changes to our house, I find out that we have a variance issue or an issue with a setback that we didn't know about. So, I've made changes to my house I can't undo now, that I've pretty much, you know, gutted my garage, put a floor in it, we put walls up, I mean, we've completely converted our garage. And as we're getting ready to do this porch, we find out from the inspector that we can't do it. And so, now we have to do this variance, which I didn't know anything about. So, I'm here tonight to try to get permission to build my front porch on my house and not have to put a very small, unusual-looking front porch on my house. So, that's kind of where we're at today.
And just to repeat, the size of the porch is what now?
It's a nine, it's a nine-foot wide, like off the front of the house, and 18-foot long. So, it's a covered porch is basically what it is, kind of like a shed roof. And I have a picture, I don't know if you'd like to see it?
But you are able to access the residence?
Yes, we have a front door that's beside that, but we are, what we, we went ahead and made changes. We were gonna enter through where the garage is at now, we put French doors on it. And right now, I just have a flat house with two French doors and no steps because we basically got stopped in the middle of the process. So, right now, it's either we build a very small, unusual-looking porch to move forward, or we get the variance to build the porch that looks right on our home. So, it's wood and kind of timber frame, wood beams, and we, I took the picture to the permit office when I did that, because I actually did the drawing myself, and I took that in. So, they, everything was evident when I got the permit and paid for the permit, which was approved.
When did you find out about the setback?
Once we got into the building process and got ready to do the porch, the inspector came out and said, how far out is the porch going? And he said, well, you're too close to the road at that point in time. Or he said, there's a certain amount of setback from the road, and we were gonna be in that setback. That's the first time we had heard about that.
But did you already have your building permits in hand when that happened?
Yes. That were approved and paid.
When you obtained that building permit, were you required to take a sketch of any kind showing how far that porch was gonna be from the road?
I provided my own drawing at that point in time, and that's what we went off of.
And it was incorrect?
It wasn't a sketch from the road, it was just a sketch of the actual house with the porch and everything on it. I mean, I don't build houses, so I didn't know exactly. I just drew what I wanted, and that's what I took there.
Mr. Williams, do you know how many feet up, so there's a nine-foot in-depth porch, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, how many feet will you incur into the setback?
I think it will be at about four-and-a-half foot over into the setback, which is my driveway. It's actually...
So, about half, about half of your porch will be, is into the 35-foot required setback?
Correct.
So, if, if the decision does not go in your favor tonight, what, are there any plans to modify? I mean, you're talking about what will probably be a really unusual, I agree with you, unusual-looking front to your house. Do you have any contingency plan?
At this moment, not really, other than I have a pretty ugly house.
I don't have any more questions.
Is there any other questions?
Yes, I just want to ask, was all these permits okay before it was checked to see if it was in compliance?
Correct, they were. I went to get the permits before we ever started doing anything on the house.
And you went to get the permits, did anybody come out and check your distances? The permits was issued before the distance was established?
Correct, but we didn't, at that point in time, we had no idea. I didn't know there was a setback. And we actually, before I moved forward with converting my garage, I sat down in the, in the planning department with a lady, and she layered a garage on my map to make sure that I could do that down the road. But I wouldn't even have added, I wouldn't have converted my garage over and even attempted to add a porch if I knew I couldn't do that.
The permit that you got, was that just for the garage, or did that include the porch?
It included the porch, and it has the footage on it, on the permit.
Did you have an idea of your setback lines before you started this proceeding?
Well, I didn't know there was a setback at all. And even if you're standing at my house and looking towards the road, you know, even if there were some kind of, you know, I always knew the state, you know, was state-maintained, so I knew there was some kind of buffer off the road, but I never would have thought it would have gotten within 10 foot of my house. You know, if you're standing in my house and looking out at the road, you wouldn't think that there would be some kind of, I didn't know anything about it. So, you know, it's definitely an issue now because I've made decisions and changed my home that I'm stuck with, pretty much.
So, after the inspector came out and told you that if you built this porch, that it would be in the state right-of-way, it was set within the setback, did you come back down to the Planning Board and tell them what they had done to you? Did you try to talk to anybody about it?
I actually called a friend that's a contractor, and he tried to do that, and he's here tonight.
If I can, can I make an observation to the rest of the board? I did drive by this location, I had an occasion to be out in the area with my son at the baseball game, so I took the opportunity to drive the area. Two things of distinction that I noticed, most of the houses in the area, that subdivision, a lot of the front porches are, by any standard, will be small. They seem to be kind of a, as an add-on thought to that, most of the houses in that area. I did notice that his house did seem to be the one that was closest to the road. So, most of the other houses in his area, his road, and then one subdivision over, were setback a lot more than his house. I know that doesn't make a big distinction, but hearing what he said already with the permitting issues, maybe we should consider that as well.
I have some drawings if you would like to see them, if anybody would like to see them.
Oh, no, it's not that, I just built a house in Brunswick County, and one of the very first things that we had to do was to get a permit, a building permit. And when we went down to get our building permit, we had to show the exact footage of the front of that house to the road. And they told us at that time that our house had to be moved back 15 feet in order to meet the setback requirements. And I'm just a little confused that you weren't told when you came to the planning department here, that you would fall within that setback if you built that porch the way you had it drawn out.
Yeah, that was never brought up. I took the drawings in, they made copies of them, and I went back over there like two weeks later, and they got my permits together, and I paid for them.
When was this?
The permit is for, let's see, 5/21/2019 was when the permit was done.
And you did construction, you started construction when?
Not long after that, we started working on it.
So, it was in this, within this calendar year?
Yes.
Without this variance, how wide will your porch end up being?
The same thing as what we got the permit for, it's a nine-by-18. It's basically the length of what my, my garage kind of stuck out, and it's a porch that goes across the front of the garage, and it has beams on it, and it's just basically a full-front porch with two French doors in the middle.
My question is, if we don't grant this variance, your nine-foot wide or deep porch will end up being how wide?
Four-and-a-half foot, which would be pretty short and weird-looking.
Or you could build steps going down versus the porch, you would have to alter.
What's standard-sized steps? How many, how many steps down do you think you would need?
We were gonna do two steps.
Two steps?
Yeah, we were just doing a front porch so we could put rocking chairs and stuff on it, you know. It's kind of hard to do that on four-foot with a handrail. I'll put a two-and-a-half foot rocking...
If you, if you have to build the two-step porch, will you, do you know if you will meet code for that?
It was just gonna be rock, two rock steps, we're gonna, two block, cinder block steps. They weren't gonna be, they're just gonna be block in front of the porch.
So, if you do, if we do not approve this variance, you're not gonna build a porch or anything, you're just gonna have two cinder block steps in front of your house?
Oh, I don't know yet.
Yeah, and that's my question, if we don't pass it, and you, and you end up having to put steps in, will you, do you know if you will meet code to simply put the steps in? Because there is code for those steps, they have to be so many, so many inches wide, times two, times the run.
Yeah, I don't know any of that. I'd be, if I answered, it would be untruthful, I don't have any idea.
Well, any decision we make here tonight is gonna be based on evidence. And it would appear that there's been evidence presented that we have no way of corroborating, and that would be that he was granted a permit stating he could build that porch, and he started construction, then he was told he could not. We have nothing to corroborate that testimony.
May I interject that the standard here is competent substantial material evidence that has to be presented to the board for the consideration. So, that's the standard for evidence.
John, could you, could you repeat that?
Yes.
Yes, substantial competent material evidence that needs to be presented to the board. That's the standard, the evidentiary standard in a quasi-judicial hearing. Is my mic working okay? I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, you can fine.
So, are you saying he's going to have to present those permits, and then we're gonna have to have somebody from permitting come in and testify?
What you consider is, in this case, is competent substantial material, it could be the credibility of the witness and his testimony. If the board so desires to see any further evidence, if it's, you have to weigh that in light of the decision that has to be made. So, in light of the ordinance here, if they're, if the board, based on the evidence presented, sees that there's an unnecessary hardship when, with the application, strict application of the ordinance, then that's something the board has to weigh and consider in its decision.
So, we, it seems as if we, it's the unnecessary hardship to the applicant that is the, is the critical point here, so we can determine whether that's the case or not the case, based on, based on what, based on his testimony alone, correct?
And again, if you look, if you look at the, your staff report also, the one, the first bullet point that is made under item nine, you look at the last, in the absence of the variance, no reasonable use can be made of the property. So, these are, these are all items that the board needs to consider in their decision, in their deliberations.
And you do, will staff confirm that he did seek the necessary permits?
I can testify if you swear.
Yeah, if you would like, then we can, as long as you're finished with the, with the current witness, if you have any further questions at the time that you would want staff to be asked, the staff, I would ask that the staff actually be sworn in and to be asked questions.
I have one final question, and that is, should you not be granted this variance, you're still going to be able to access your residence from that porch, aren't you?
Yeah, somehow. Yeah, what, yeah, somehow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna ask you to take a seat, and we're gonna swear in, Ms. Spencer. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence and testimony as you shall present to the Rockingham County Board of Adjustments on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
When our, and actually, my department includes the permitting department. The, it's one of four sections that I am in the, under my directorship, and when a building permit is issued, it's accompanied by a zoning permit. At the time of this permit, it would likely have been accompanied with a separate zoning permit that specifies the, the required setbacks. So, we don't require by ordinance a site plan. My staff had been, had not been in the habit of, of asking for site plans, and so I initiated a process by which we started to ask residents for site plans. If a resident came into the, to the office without one, we would try our best to help them with a site plan, but at the end of the process, it's their responsibility to know where their property line is and what the setbacks are.
Does his application precede your initiative to change the process?
I think it does, because my, my initiative came really, put my foot down, I guess, in June and July.
Carrie, do you have, excuse me, Ms. Spencer, do you have, in your notes or in your records, any type of timeline that Mr. Williams followed as far as this case goes? You know, what, what happened from A to B?
I don't have, I don't have the permit with the date of the permit. He, he may have that date, but typically, a, a customer comes into our office and leaves with a permit within the, within that visit. So, he would have come into the office, gone over the zoning and building permit, given his building plans to the building inspector to review, and then he would have been, I don't know how long after that he started construction. The next thing I heard about it was when they called for inspection, and the inspector noticed a setback issue.
So, at any point, would the inspector coordinate with your staff to make sure that any site plans, in this, just in this case, I understand that you've changed the protocol now, but at, for this particular case, do you know if there was any concerted effort to coordinate between the permitting point and the inspection point so that, that would maybe have caught this issue?
There, there would not have been. The way the building permit, the permit is issued, the applicant signs the permit agreeing to the conditions, and that gives you a permit to build. It gives you permission to build. But the inspectors don't get involved until they're called to inspect some part of the work. And what seems to have happened is that the inspectors were called to inspect the garage, and when the, when the framing inspection or another step of inspection was called for, when the porch was being built, then it was noticed that it appeared to be too close to the-
That's what, that's when they measured.
Yeah, when it was called.
So, at what point, or sort of roundabout date, this is in May of this year?
May.
May of this year, so between May and today, that's five months, obviously, but you have made some changes to the protocols so that maybe this-
Yes, ma'am, and, and we've actually-
But you were working under previous protocols at the time?
That's right. For instance, one of the protocols that we have today is that our zoning permit specifically states that you are responsible for any underground utilities, septic fields, wells, and, and the, it doesn't specifically call out the setback, but the property owner signs the zoning permit acknowledging the setbacks.
So, at the time, do you know if there was any type of, say, checklist or things that the homeowner, could the homeowner, this have been missed, and, and the homeowner not told that you need to make sure there's setback, or?
No, because the zoning permit itself is automatically printed with a setback on it.
Okay.
And he received that information when he, when he got his permit?
I don't, I, he should have received that information. I wasn't there to see that he was given that copy. I know it's in our system. It's in our software tracking system.
But you can't, with all assuredness, based on, I, I'm hearing that you, that, I'm hearing you say that the protocols may have been, not been in place, so that, that assured, that was insured at the time of permit?
I will, I will say that it is plausible-
Okay.
-that he was led to believe something that was different, but it's a, it's a very difficult, it's a bit of a slippery slope, because we do put a lot of responsibility on the property owner now to, to understand those rules and regulations.
But, but you have since changed your protocols?
Yes, yes.
Got it, all right.
Any other questions for Spencer? Thank you, Carrie. Any discussion by the board? I feel guided somewhat by the fact that this variance request will, as on the bottom of the staff report, it won't extend or expand any non-conforming use of the land, change the district bounty shown on the zoning map, impair any adequate supply of light or air to the adjacent property, materially, materially increase the public danger of fire, materially diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area, or in any other respect impair public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. If a motion is made to approve this variance, I will vote to support it.
And I feel like, just to say, do we, do we do a motion for this? Is this just a straight-out vote?
John, do we need a motion for this, or did we-
I would, I would say a motion would need to be made, due to the fact that there needs to be an approval or denial of the request.
Okay.
Then, do we have a motion to approve or deny?
Excuse me, I have some questions.
Sure.
Since a lot of these dates, since a lot of these dates were coming from two eras with dates, and, you know, you might assume it was hearsay. He said, she said, should this case be tabled until dates could be actually documented to present, relate to this case?
If, if the board so requires additional evidence, they can continue a hearing out and require additional evidence to be presented. So, there's, there's not a problem with that procedurally.
Well, I think, you know, if we got back together, and dates were presented actual, we'd be able to determine what happened according to the guidelines of the dates. If that makes sense.
Well, what we, what we do know so far, though Mr. Harris is that his permit was issued before incoming director, Carrie Spencer, changed the protocols.
But she didn't change the law. I built a house in Rockingham County 30 years ago, and I was made aware of the setbacks when I got my building permit. She did not change the law in any way. She was just making it easier for folks to come in and submit a, a drawing of, of what they had in mind to do. So, I think what she was saying to us is, when he came in to get his permit, he was given his permit, and he was given a zoning permit, which made him aware of his setbacks. And as a homeowner, it was his responsibility to make sure that whatever he did fell within those setbacks.
Well, the message I got was that he may not have been given the setback.
Well, then, that's what's at question.
Yeah.
We need to see a copy of those permits. So, I, I make a motion that we table this until we can gather some further evidence.
He has the permits.
You have the permits? Okay, maybe we need to take a look at them.
Do we have, John, can we, are we allowed to do that?
We'd have to take them into evidence, wouldn't we?
Do we recall the witness?
Yes.
And taking them into evidence, he would have to submit those and be accepted by the board's evidence.
Okay. Will we call Patrick Williams in?
Hey, I want you to review if a motion be made to accept that as evidence, necessarily exhibit A, then a motion be made and, and accepted into evidence.
I make a motion that we accept the permits presented by Mr. Williams as evidence.
I need to know that this is all there is involved in this permitting process. Can you do that?
I, I can't review it.
If you would. Make sure that these are all the documents that he was given.
Hey, I think we, I think as he's, as he hands them to, I think we need to either accept, John, am I correct? We need to accept them as he's handed them to us, and then we can, we can let Carrie examine it.
Yeah, exactly. If, if you want, if you want to ask further questions of Ms. Spencer's staff to review these as well and ask her questions, you can recall her as a witness.
And I just made a motion that we accept the, the evidence presented by Mr. Williams as evidence in this case.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
And then, do you want to recall?
Yes.
Carrie first?
We're gonna recall Ms. Spencer to authent, authenticate the documents.
And address whether or not these might have been all of the documents that he was given.
These are all of the documents that he would have been given to begin construction as a building permit. This is, this was actually, all it would have been given as a building permit, and I see there is a separate, there is a separate zoning approval and a separate building permit approval. This entitled zoning permit, and the owner is entitled building permit. The last sheet, the third sheet is a, is a receipt.
And if you would, right here in the center, this section right here, that states setbacks, front 35, rear 15, side 15, and side 15, do you see that?
I do, that's correct, and I don't know if you want to share that?
I'd like to share this with the rest of the board.
Oh, yeah.
So, basically, the setbacks were established in the issuing of the, before starting construction. Spencer, these setbacks were established in writing before the construction of the po, no, let me back up. The setbacks were established at the issuance of his permit.
That's correct.
So, therefore, it was known that there was a setback.
It was known in, based on the document of the zoning permit and the owner's signature.
Right, okay. That's my question, thank you. Ms. Spencer, I think he wants to speak, but you'll have to, you'll-
He'll have to address the-
You'll have to wait till she finishes, and then we can recall you. So, it appears as though the protocol for identifying the setback was, in fact, made without your initiative to change the protocols.
Correct, with the protocol at the time, correct?
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Spencer, when permits are issued to homeowners, bearing in mind that these are laypeople, and, or is there any instruction given to them to make sure that they, they conform to this? Or do you know it was that part of the protocol at the time to make sure that these, these things were followed?
It's clear, it's clearer now. It's one of those things where my staff might be giving information that is misunderstood or misinterpreted. There may be cases where the property owner is, where the two, the two are seeing something different in their, in their head as they're discussing it and explaining the situation. I don't know if that makes any sense. Why, what? So, it may have been that where there was further explanation, it may or may not have helped, to be honest.
Any other discussion based on this new evidence? Or any, or any questions for Ms. Spencer?
I have an observation. I think that we're, we're sort of in a tough spot here, because clearly there's, you know, we've been handed a set of papers, and whether you read it in strict black and white, or there's a gray area. I, I think that, from what Ms. Spencer is telling us, there's a definite gray area here, that, but it also can be interpreted as a clear black and white. So, I think-
And the, and the gray is, in my experience, and, and that gray area is pretty common, and so the protocols to, to make sure to eliminate any gray, at the end of the day, however, as my building inspector will say, if he made a mistake and then goes out to the site and sees that an electrical installation is wrong, he's not gonna pass it, even though he made a, may have made a mistake at it, about it at first.
And I feel like one of the things that we're trying to, to determine here, in the best interest, we have these codes in the best interest of the citizens of Rockingham County, and we have one standing before us. And does this cause an unnecessary hardship for him in having a home that, that is aesthetically pleasing and serves their purpose? And I think it's clear that we fall almost in a gray, in the gray area here, and as staff, the staff, the staff conclusions, I think, we should certainly consider. And I totally understand how people would read this one way and could easily come down on either side, but I think that for the homeowner here, putting two cinder blocks would not, I don't think it would actually serve the county's purpose so much either. So, it's just-
I believe there's someone else who wants to speak. If you're, do you have further questions?
No, I guess we can-
From me, as a witness?
No, we'll recall Patrick Williams. Thank you, Carrie. Mr. Williams? Is it different, is it different from the ones that were shown on the screen?
That we did when I went in to get the, the inspection, and before I did anything, I wanted to make sure I could add a garage one day. With that being said, this is the garage, which is three times the size of the front porch, okay? So, it's laid in here beside my house. The porch would, would barely make it to the front of my cars here. So, obviously, that would have never happened either, if this is 35-foot issue. If you're in my development, and now I'm a forester by trade, so I can find property lines pretty good, this was, this was surveyed after the fact of this coming up, and I still don't know where the property line is at because of the way the cul-de-sac falls in this curve.
If we can make a motion, if you want to admit this into evidence, again, make a motion as exhibit, and adopt it, if, sir, if, if you could step to the microphone, if they can ask you questions about this piece of evidence, that would be helpful. Thank you.
We need a motion to accept this map presented by the applicant as exhibit B.
Just I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? All opposed? The map is now in as evidence Exhibit B.
Now, I do know that the map is unofficial, because I'm in forestry business, and I know that they were trying to, you know, I wanted to know if it would work, and they were trying to make it work for me. They were very helpful. I'm not saying anybody was wrong in any way, but even as a human being, we all make mistakes, and if you told me today to go find my property line in the front of my house and figure out where my setbacks are at, I still couldn't do it. I couldn't tell you today. I could not go find it today, even with it being surveyed. So, I don't know if this affects people down the road, but if you leave it up to the homeowner to go find their property lines, they're going to say, oh, well, there's an iron post, and there's a T-post, and there's an old axle, well, maybe that's my corner. They're never going to find their lines. A surveyor has to do that. And that's, that's tough in some places. I find them, I have to find them all the time. So, I, myself, can't find it today. It looks like it's three times the distance, if you had to physically go out there and walk it off, that you can't tell where the actual county setback's at.
Mr. Williams, how much road frontage do you have?
I don't know the exact amount of road frontage.
And up this road frontage, you're asking for, I mean, you're asking for nine feet of variance?
No, five feet. Five feet.
Four, yeah, four and a half, but, but nine feet of the road frontage. He's, he's not asking for the entire frontage as variance. He's asking-
No, he's not actually asking for road frontage. He's, no, his house is not in the road.
No, no, no. What I'm asking is that he has a certain number of feet that fall under the setback rules, and of that certain number of feet, and I don't have no idea to figure out how much road frontage he has, but of that, his porch will be nine by 18, did you say?
Yes.
Okay, so he's actually asking for 18 feet of that setback to be encroached by four and a half feet.
Right.
I'm doing math, that's a scary thing.
Which is my driveway. I'm encroaching on myself, really. I mean, I know it is, it's, that's the county setback, but it doesn't affect anybody but myself.
And there, there are two houses in this cul-de-sac, correct?
Correct. Yeah, our best friends live across the street. That's why I bought the house.
Mr. Williams, I got a question for you, if I may. One of the stipulations on our staff notes is number four, that we talk about the, the public safety issue. Do you view this setback as any potential public safety issue?
No, sir.
What about, what would your feelings be about substantial justice? That's one of our other things we look at. Do you think justice would be served by allowing you the, the four and a half feet?
Absolutely.
Do you also think that that would meet, let me back up, do you think that would in any way distract the neighborhood look, aesthetics, by adding that?
Any further discussion by the board, or any questions rather for Mr. Williams?
No.
I think we're good. Then we need a motion to deny or approve every requested variance.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the variance based on the evidence presented, and that we grant Mr. Williams the variance he needs to complete his house.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, signify by like sign. The variance is approved. Mr. Williams, do you like your documents back?
That's a nice map. Yes.
At this time, according to procedure, we need a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustments meeting.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Reopen the board so we can-
We're now reopening the planning board meeting for business. It's getting late, folks. We have, do we have any old business, Carrie? It doesn't appear as though we do.
We don't have any old business, and this is, this is actually a business of the board itself to elect a chair and co-chair. It's the, it's the new business that I would recommend you accomplish tonight.
Okay, do we have any nominations for chair?
I nominate Paul Sunowitz for chair.
Second?
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. I guess I can't vote.
You can vote for yourself.
All right. We also need to have a nomination for vice chair. I'd like to nominate Julie Talbert.
I second that nomination.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, signify like sign. Congratulations. Add a vice chairman.
I will, I do have a quick update. We have received a request for qualifications from a firm called Destination by Design that are, I'm really, really excited about doing our land use plan and UDO update.
Oh, good.
Destination by Design, check them out. They've done work for other municipalities. They have some really cool video marketing work that they do to engage public in a plan, and they are ready to start right away. We'll be asking you and the Board of Commissioners and Advisory Group to meet together, to, to meet the consultant and talk to him about some, some path forward. I don't know if you, did you meet with the consultant in the past?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, the last person that was engaged to act as the consultant gave us quite a lengthy presentation.
Okay. So, we'll be, we'll be doing that with, together with the Board of Commissioners and the Advisory Group.
Okay. Will we be notified when that's going to take place?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I have a question. I have a question. You know, quite often, we have cases presented to us, and the applicant's not present. I think at times like that, we should table the case until the applicant can be present.
If, and John said, I said, no, I won't need you anymore. I think that a property owner has the right to, for their case to be heard. If you, if you feel that you can't properly review a case without hearing from the applicant, then I could see that being justified, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't answer that the same across the board, to be honest. I would, I would, I would do that situation by situation. With a conditional zoning, for instance, you, you can't hear it without the, no, you should not hear it without the applicant present. With a, a straight rezoning, I would say it depends on whether you need that applicant in order to make a recommendation. I know I didn't really answer your question very straight.
Good suggestion, good suggestion. Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Meeting's over.